All right, it's free.
Um, all right. Call meeting order? All right, try that again, that's call meeting order. And we'll move the first item over to the corner.
Well, thanks for coming today. As you know, this session, you can guide into the budget. And he was formed as a little budget process. And just kind of talk about how process we had really is a stickler to process. There certainly did even, but forever upon that. The budget that we're living on a day-to-day basis right now is different than the budget that we're going to get in terms of preparing us for national. One of the things that I think is important.
One of the things that I think is really important for everybody to know is to, for us to be where we are today, we've already done a whole lot of vetting and a whole lot of developing of the budget. Mr. Veek and the folks in his department have done a great deal of work. Folks in the, at the building level and at the district level have had numerous meetings to get to where we are today. So now it, it really becomes a matter of what does this look like publicly? What does it look like from a board perspective? And how can we make sure that over the next couple of months, we get the best finished project for a budget that we get? So with that information and as background, I'll turn it over to Mr. Veek for the nuts and bolts of the actual budget.
Thank you, Dr. Maher. So we didn't, we weren't able to get the screens working today. So fortunately, everything I was going to show you is in this book anyway here. So we'll just go through, I'll tell you what page we're on and stop me as we go. Okay, questions if that's all right. I'm going to start on page four, which has the executive summary in it. And that's more for the, or it's a draft executive summary. That's more for the board meeting next Wednesday, the, the hearing. But I'll just touch on a few things. You can see our revenue, we're showing 8.2 million, but that includes a, that includes a transfer. We'll get into that here in a second. So it's really not up that much. Our expenses are up about $4 million on a $168.6 million budget last year. I was calculating out. It's roughly, roughly 2.4%. It's heavily influenced by minimal state aid increases. Last year was 0.3%. This year it's 1%. The plan we have, we'll spend into the fund balance by about $900,000 in FY19. It's lower than projected, but is, that's being driven by a five-point, a proposed 5.75 million transfer from the capital outlay fund. It's one time, it's not expected to be there into the future. I'm going to walk you through a little bit how that has transitioned over the last three or four years. Used to be show up as an expense in that fund. We'll talk about that here when we get to the five-year plan. The lowest projected, well, I'm going to get into that, I'm going to get into the plan. I'll just talk about some of the highlights. We have about $1 million in new state aid formula funds due to increased enrollment and increased, projected an increase in ELL enrollment. We have about $1.3 million in additional stated formula funds because of the 1% increase from the state. We have a $900,000 in reduction, I'm going to talk about that in a minute too, due to the reallocation of other fund revenues. We have $1.6 million in additional property tax revenues. We took that opt-out last year after we had done the budget and approved that in July. So that's showing up in this year's budget. We have a $1.1 million reduction in federal funds. We have a, that one-time transfer, of course, and miscellaneous. When you add all those up and then subtract out 700,000, you basically get that, that increase. On the expenditure side, we have 2.47 million dollar increase in salaries, which includes 2.7 for the teachers. We have 1.2 almost million dollar increase in health insurance. That's 4.7. Those rates were approved by the board, I think it was last time we met. We have $1.7 million due to elementary, middle and high school instruction. That's in those instruction packets, that's the increases in the, in the number of students. And then also an increase for the freshman academy at Lincoln High. And curriculum services, I'll talk about this in the, in the five-year plan as well. But at one point, we had a really large implementation last, or the year we're in right now. So for next year, for the FY19 budget, we have a decrease. We have a proposal to flatten that out in the future. We'll talk about that in the five-year plan. So those are some of the highlights. I guess, yeah, we can talk, we'll get into the capital outline, special ed fund as we get through it. And we'll show what happens to taxes as we go through this as well. So this is kind of a summary that fits more for the, the, the regular televised hearing. So we'll go through that and we'll greater, we'll go through these two pages in greater detail at that time. So if you flip to page seven, it's exhibit five, page seven and eight, they're the same document, they just show different, different parts of the, just two different views of the same document. It's the five-year plan that we went over as a committee in, late in our middle of March. And what we try to do is, and this comes, goes back to the original Finance Action Network, is have a plan where we're roughly around eight and a half percent in the fund balance as we look out five years down the road. And preferably that is leveled off or gaining a little. It's not on a downward trajectory, otherwise we know years six, seven, eight are going to look worse. So that's what our, that's what we budget for is a roughly eight and a half percent, eight and a half percent, take or give a half a percent, five years down the road. And what that represents is at eight and a half, eight and a half percent, we can cash flow the district. Yeah, our property taxes, we get them in two big chunks typically, November and May. And that eight and a half percent will get us from June 30th, when the fund balance is measured through November without having to inter-fund borrow, or if the other funds are low, going to another bank. So that, that's where that number came up with, and we've been using it for many, many years. I think for over 10 years, we've been using that since the first Finance Action Network met. If anybody wants to complain about that, one of the original members is in the audience, it was Doug. Doug was on, was on that original group when he was at Citibank. So what this page versus the next one, we're going to look at, what this page shows you is what we have, what we have traditionally shown, this Finance Action Network has met four or five or six times, I think, since that original time, probably at least four or five. And we put in key variables going forward as we, as we project out, and that's that yellow section there. We even let that, you know, we would let them, and they didn't meet this year, but we still use this, this format, and we go through it when we, the group of 23 of us, the committee, the budget committee meets, we, we look at this as well. And it's key assumptions going forward. And so what we have here, and we have some new ones on here, that other fund redistribution, now that's a, that's kind of a strange deal. We, that's a new line, actually, on here. What happened is, a couple of years ago, when they, when the legislature read the formula, they took that opportunity, and we always said they should, they should not mess with other funds. Like, a big one for us is the bank franchise tax. Other school districts, it's if you have a waystation in your district and you don't have very many kids, you get a very large per pupil amount off of, off of those fines that are paid from a waystation, for instance. They said if you're going to redistribute those, redistribute them as part of a massive overhaul of the formula. And that's what they did two years ago. And nobody would, nobody wanted it done right away to them, because there's winners and losers on that deal. So they phased it in over several years. And they gave you hold harmless, and the hold harmless is, this is the, it's at 80% of, of your base amount, which is what you had prior to the passage of that formula. And oddly enough, we, our school district, we represent 17.4% of the total local deed in the normal formula. So we would typically get 17.4% of state aid. We represent 12.6% of the other rev, other fund revenue. So we should theoretically be a winner on that. But because we had a, when the base years were set, our bank franchise tax, which is the one fund we win on, the others, if, if they were not redistributed, we win on the, the bank franchise tax, we're losers on the others. So when you redistribute it, it goes the other way. Well, that fund was a kind of at a, one of its historic lows, and now it had come back last year, and so it lags for two years. So we're actually getting, we're getting punished in that fund, and eventually we'll work our way out of it. So that's what, that first line there, that other fund redistrib, we're getting, that's actually like a negative 900,000 for us this year. But eventually that'll turn positive as we go out over time. And that's what that's showing. When that fund gets phased in, we'll end up not being a loser on it, be a slight winner, but from 900,000. So that'll get, that'll get better as we go out. The bank franchise tax, then we've got in there, but event, you know, that just offsets itself two years later. So in the future here, when we get this thing fully funded, we'll just build some type of a, a flat amount on that, so that if that ebbs and flows, we're not budget, we're not messing the, with the budget, because we know it's just going to get redistributed anyway as we work that in. State apportionment, that is sent out based on the number of pupils you have in your school district, so that is not redistributed. So that fund will be, you know, that'll be something that'll still be a variable from year to year as we go forward. And that's what, that projection there is consistent with the typical growth in that. Opt-out, we're currently opting out at 9.1 million dollars. I left that number flat. The committee for next year, we left it flat, and then I left it flat going forward. The idea with this opt-out was that if we get low increases in the state aid formula, and we want to keep our salaries moving forward, we can eat that up. Or if federal funds take a hit on it, we, we got both. We got a small increase in the state aid formula, and our federal funds got hit, but we did not propose, the committee decided not to propose raising that opt-out. We've got, we're at 1.6 million on that second opt-out, so there's 3.4 million left in there, believing that flat. The reason I've got a box out there in FY22 and 23 is the seven and a half million dollar opt-out will be coming off the books. And if it's not, if it's not re-upped, that money, that would, that would necessarily drop. But I just, for the assumption of this five-year plan, left it, left that in there. The transfer from capital outlay is in there. Like I said before, that's a one-timer. If you look at below, that's the, that's the revenue side. If you look at the expenditure side and you go to the bottom in the yellow there, last year, we were offloading general fund expenses into the capital outlay fund. You've been able to do that for many years, and then they really upped that amount, up to 40% of your fund. You could do recently, you could always do the 15% of your bus contract if you had that, you could do your, your textbooks. And then they just said, two years, two or three years ago, they just said, you can do up to 40% of your capital outlay fund. Well, the Department of Ed said that's screwing up how we report to the federal government what our expenditures are. Those are typical general fund expenditures. So they said, instead, we'll just let you transfer that money. So that's why the expense went away and the transfer, so it becomes a revenue now instead of a, on the expense side of the ledger. We have efficiency factor built in of 0.75. That means we think we can cut 0.75 out of our budget each year. And as you get further out, it's harder to keep finding efficiencies, so we kind of phase that out as we go out. Teacher delta, we thought this was going to be a fairly big year next year. It isn't, because that's the last year of our old early retirement incentive. It didn't turn out to be as big as we thought. So that's fairly conservative number there. But I do think with what, with what we did, when the salary, the salaries and what's happened with SDRS, you're going to have more teachers teaching a little bit longer into their career. So we, that 800,000 is, I don't think it's too low. I don't think it's too high. But I, I think, I mean, I think we're being fairly conservative on that number, and maybe we'll do a little better. But what that is, the teacher delta, we always think everybody knows what we're talking about, when we talk about that, is when a teacher who's at the high end of the pay scale leaves and is replaced by one who's at the beginning of the pay scale, obviously the district sees a savings. That's what that's about. Health insurance increases, we, we put in a maximum of five into our agreements as we, and of course, we're negotiating with the classified staff right now, but we've had it in there the last three or four times, is that the district will go up to 5%. So that's the amount we budget. We were, prior to doing that, we had been at 14% a year. And we've really done some things over the last 15, 10, 15, 10 years, I'd say, to really limit that. And we haven't had an increase on their side greater than 5% since, since we put that in. So that's nice. So that's kind of the, the key variables. And then the next page is just same info, just a little more detail of, of what's in here. The one thing I wanted to point out before we get into what our fund balance looks like is, if you look at line 29, that textbook adoption, with that thing would go up from 4.8 million down to some years under a million and bounce all around. Last year, we had talked about in this meeting, maybe we can flatten that out. And in years where you're, where you spend less than you budget, you just put it in reserve. And then the years where you need to spend more than you budget, you just tap that reserve. So I just have it going up with the number of student, the student growth, is essentially what's going on there. So that's nice, that'll even out that budget so it doesn't go like that. So what you can see here is on the projected 18, we think we've got the original budget in there. And then on line 18, we have an adjustment for how we think we're going to come in, in that year. We think we're going to come in about 2 million to the good. And I think we actually might even be able to do a little better than that. But 2 million to the good, we've got in. And part of that's helped out by, let's give the legislature credit, they gave us one-time money of 0.7% at the end of the, this fiscal year. So that's about 900,000. So that's a, that's a, that's a fairly significant amount. So that's, that's part of that. And that's why I think maybe we can even do better than that, 2 million dollars. So we show that we're probably going to come around 7.5% at the end of this year. We had even planned to possibly go lower last year, but, but that'll be decent. Next year, we're only into it by about $860,000 because of that transfer from the capital outlay fund. That'll take us down to 6.8. And then the year after that is, in the next two years, I guess, although the, in FY21, we do show actually slightly being the positive, because we're spending more money, the percent drop, drops a little bit. And then we show ourselves climbing out of it. And that honestly, that efficiency factor, go down to line 41, that shows you how over, over five years, how much that affects that. If we did, if we weren't building that in, we'd be at 4% out in FY23 versus 9%. So what that tells you is we have to do a good job of finding those efficiencies as we budget. And those committees look through that. So that's what the five-year plan looks like. Any questions about any of that? Well, what, no, ask a question about it.
I guess you said, is it going to back, fund at the back, 5.75, you think it's going to go away and that's why we're transferring it, or I guess?
Oh, yeah, I wasn't real clear about that. I was just saying one time, we only built in one transfer once out of the capital outlay fund, as we've kind of been trying to wean ourselves off that. Now, last year, we didn't spend as much out of it, as we're transferring this year. This year, we, we got hit with the, the 1% going forward, and we have kind of committed to increasing our salaries in that, in that, you know, moving the salary schedule forward instead of backwards. So if we think we can do that, we're going to have to tap into that capital outlay a little more than we had in the past to be able, to be able to afford that. And we didn't want to raise the tax. And I'm going to show you what's going to happen to the taxes here in a second. So we did go into that more than we thought, but then as we, you know, the, the prior exhibit five on the prior page, as we go forward, we didn't budget anything out of the capital outlay. I think that's a good thing, that we're not planning to keep raiding, you know, put that in the air pool. It's raiding the capital outlay fund year in and year out. We're, we're going to try to, we're going to get off, get off that so we can use the capital outlay fund for capital projects. But this year, we did, we wanted to not tap into the, we wanted to keep the property taxes level or actually dropping a little bit to that rate. So that, that was kind of sacrificed, the committee just decided to recommend this year. And that's what's going on with that. Not that the money's going away, just that we're not going to move it into the general fund. Next page, nine, it's exhibit 10. This is a look, we've done this for years, well, obviously back, look back to the turn of the millennium, back to 2000, and look at what, what's happened. This is an actual house in Sioux Falls, located in southwest Sioux Falls. We track the taxes on that house all the way back to 2000. And you can see, you know, night, and of course, 2019 is projected, because we don't know exactly where things are going to finish exact. We know what the assessed value is, it's 175, but we don't know what the taxable value is. That's actually determined by the Department of Revenue based on what's going on in, in the state and in the county. But based on the same ratio as in 2018, we show that going up to 162. Anyway, over the, over the whole 18-year, our 19-year period, the total increase is projected to be 21.2%, which is an average annual increase of 1.1% a year. Not too shabby. Just for something to compare it to, I look back, give you the same period of time, but I, I don't know how to project what state's going to be in FY19, so I go two years back and lag it, lag for two years, just what's happened with the sales tax on a per capita basis over that same period of time. You see that average increases 4%, just a little of where our taxes are going. Oh, I, I should say, the, the actual levy though, on a home, is projected to drop from 8.28 this year to 8.18. And the reason there's a slight increase is because of the valuation of the house projected, projected to go up. That's what's going on with the taxes in the district. Go through this, but if we go, and we look at the general fund revenues, I kind of touched on the biggies, so I think I'm going to skip over that and kind of, in the interest of time. If you have questions on any of those, we can certainly get back to them. There's a, there's a little write-up there on page 13 of the, some of the highlights or lowlights, I guess, if you think of Title I in the restricted general fund. I'll just talk about the one. Title I is, is projected to drop about 15% next year. And that is a factor of, of our poverty as ranked by the census, they, they showed our poverty level dropping in Sioux Falls relative to the rest of the state. So that's why we're, we're projecting that. We're actually slightly over a million total, the district budgeted in these restricted general funds. And we'll go through these expenditures here in more detail in a second. The next couple of pages just kind of show you some funds that, some programs that combine sources. And I, I don't want to spend a ton of time on that, but it gives you kind of a look at different funding sources that are funding several things in the district, mostly federal. But ELL does combine district, and that's the next page after that, that's page 15. ELL combines several different cost centers combined in to fund our ELL program. And that tries to give you a, so you don't have to flip all around looking for what's going on there, that gives you a snapshot of that. And that's what those two pages are for. And then if we look at the expenditures by program on page 17, gives you a snapshot of, of the entire district, where we were last year, where we're proposing to be next year. And I'm going to kind of skip through that, because we're going to go through it in more detail when you get to page 19. On this document, it's page, it says page, so there's two page numbers, but page 19, if you look at the one in the middle, that page 12 pertains to a different document. But if you go through there, we'll touch on some of these, the major changes. This is where we ask the committees to send us what their recommendation is, and then give us a quick write-up. And that's you see in that right column of what's going on in those. So just, I'll just take the first one, that's elementary instruction. There isn't a huge change to that. It's just a, it's 184,000, it's just maintaining their, their ratio in that fund. It's just a slight 0.4, 5% change. And there isn't, like I said, there isn't a whole lot going on there, other than just funding the same ratio at 24.3. I'm not going to touch on all these, I'm just going, I'm just going to touch on the ones that are significant, and those are in color. Blue shows a cut, was supposed to be green, but I think the printer was running out of, maybe in the nears it's green, I might, and red shows an increase, a fairly significant one. Of course, literacy in action, you saw, heard that report a couple of months ago, that, that program was eliminated. There's some other increases, I'll talk about that, that are, that are kind of offsetting that a little, a bit. Lunchroom supervision, we budget for that. That is not a major change, although it is showing up, anything over half percent shows up, or a decrease, it's not a major decrease, but it's in there as well. Administrative services, it's just a, it's level four of four, so it isn't a big change, it's just more how the salaries broke out among the elementary principals.
A question on that, just for clarification. It says, we'll provide principals at 22 elementary schools, along with two assistant principals at two schools, so. elementary schools, along with two assistant principals at two schools. So two schools will have one principal and two assistants? Or they'll have one principal and one assistant?
One and one.
Okay.
Yeah. And, yeah, those are, yeah, assistant principals versus admin interns are in staff development because they're learning how to become an administrator. So that's the difference there. We work our way through. I'm going to kind of focus on the level fives. If you go down to our, our big cuts below four, if you go down to tab seventeen, it's on page twenty. It's high school instruction. That contains the three-point F, three-point eight FTE for the freshman academy at LHS. That's, it'd be similar to the freshman academy at Washington. That's showing good results in getting freshman kids their, their required number of credits so they can become sophomores. And that's critical to helping with the graduation rates.
And we have one at each of the high schools now.
It's not an academy at Roosevelt. They've got a different, our two program is what they use.
You have freshman academy in Washington.
Mm-hmm.
Two programs. Program design. Freshman transition through their freshman success. This one is, well, it's a different.
Right. And that's what my point was to leave now.
If you go to the next page, actually, two pages, I think. If you go to the, I'm going to skip down to, it's not an increase, but on page twenty-one, tab twenty-two there, advanced placement program. So, you know, it's not a big budget, but it's a fifteen percent increase. And what that adds, good news. That's, they get, they get funded based on how many kids pass the, or get a three or better on the AP test. So that, that's a good news increase, I guess. And it isn't a ton of money that that program gets either. English, English language learners further down the page. It's an expansion. It'll maintain their current service. And then it also supports the removal of the middle school immersion center as a title school with Title One support. It, so the one point, the increase of one point one teacher FTE makes up for that, where they're moving out, you know, we divided out the middle school immersion center. It's now at, it's now in two places. It used to be at McGovern and at, and now it's over at Whittier. In a couple of years, it will be, every school will just have their own immersion program. There won't be an immersion center, or there'll be their own ELL program. That's getting ready for that. As we go through here, further, transportation services, it's a level, it's on page twenty-two.
So that English language learner pullout you have on page fifteen, it doesn't have in that four million dollars from the high school.
On page twenty.
Fifteen.
Back on page fifteen. There's district dollars.
Yep. And then this is the separate.
Of four point two. Well, this is, I believe this is in that.
Okay.
Andy, you know, can you confirm that? Yeah. This, that should be part of that number. That's our total district.
Okay.
Amount in there. Yeah. And it matches up to this number. So that, that's the new dollar amount. I need to, transportation services, it looks like a large increase. Well, it is in the general fund. But what that was, is that was what I was explaining, is we were pulling expenses out of the, of the general fund and moving in the capital. And now, we're not, now we're showing it as an expense in the general fund, but we're offsetting it with some revenue from the capital with the transfer. So that's what's going on there. It really isn't that large of an increase. Staff development has a level six of six. And I know you guys all know this, but level four would be level funding, level five, and anything beyond that would be expansions. So there are two expansions in staff development. It provides targeted and continuous staff development to first-year and veteran teachers through the instructional coaching program, continues to support teachers to integrate technology into curriculum instruction, and to promote differentiations, data analysis, and student engagement to increase academic achievement, provides an administrator high school at Roosevelt High School. So a couple, few things going on there. We lost some Title One money. And we also, we taught, we said we cut the LIA program. But what we wanted to do is in the Title One schools, and actually enhance their instructional coaches, because that is, I'm out of my, out of my league here. But that's what's proven to be effective, right?
We did a study and looked at, what we did in the base bank part of the first two is in that classroom. So we qualified that classroom, the instructional coaches. So that's another part of that. Another, another part of that is, really, reduction in federal money, part of the instructional coaching cost that. So that's part of, the other piece that I want to draw your attention to, is the intern at Roosevelt, particularly achieved from other high schools. And the reason is that we need more of the, can't necessarily add more of these, we have teachers, as we know, and we don't have very good metrics on how we add constant.
So.
So.
So just working our way through here, tab thirty-nine on page twenty-three, that's student assessments. That's expanding the MAP assessment. So you get it all the way up through eight, through middle school. Administrative legal services has an expand, has two expansions. And those are part, you've heard about these reported, that's part of the strategic plan. And it, it can, you know, we came up with some one-time money this year to fund the pilot study with Kinvolb. This will, this will actually put it into the budget. And then we, they created the teacher pathway program and the teacher internship program. And that's what these expansions do. They fund those, all those elements of the strategic plan. So that's the, that's the unrestricted general fund budget. Restricted has some interesting variances going on there, including Title One set aside going away. That program's not funded by the federal government anymore. We did talk about, and then I'm on page twenty-four, about Title One, improving basic programs, having a seven percent budgetary reduction. I think the difference, you know, we're thinking fifteen, but, but do we have some carryover, some things like that?
Possibly.
Yeah.
Possibly.
So that's, that's what's going, what's going on there. And Title Two is taking a big cut as well. And that's improving teacher quality. You see that as well. And then language instruction isn't a huge grant, but that shows a cut as well. So the federal money is really a hit. I mean, it's a hit to the budget. And that's part of what we talked, a total of a million dollars in there being cut district-wide.
Reduction in federal dollars. It's a, one year. I just want you to.
It's a great question. I don't have a great answer. The reason I say that, is we're looking at the surprise question, not particularly exactly the specific statement that, our, our poverty rate went down in comparison to the state poverty rate. So we're not necessarily, you were students who were looking at the problem, but in comparison to the state. So how is that one of the work, in comparison to the state? How, 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 how great is it?
I don't know. It depends on what goes on in Washington. I don't think we're going to drop more as our share of the pie. It depends on, you know, if anybody knows what's going to go on in Washington, I.
Right. And I guess that, that is my question. In terms of, in terms of the pie, you, I don't see our share of it small. And that's what happened this year. The question is whether the federal, the pie will reduce. I guess the best is.
Three forty, I don't know that we could.
What you have in Washington.
It'll change.
Question with the loss of funds for instructional coaches. I know prior to us having the instructional coaches program with veterans, teachers who get like a five hundred dollar additional payment for helping teachers. Is that something we could look at doing, offset some of that cost of money? Or is that not as successful a program?
No, do you see, I'm saying.
I can't speak in political, with that, with that ability.
Okay.
Obviously, probably one for the, number one. Number two, in the end, we're not losing instructional coaches.
Right. But if the dollars kept, I guess if it became a budget issue for us or something.
We would, we would really have to, other alternatives. Because I think right now, we're seeing, we're doing the bank for a lot of instructional coaches, but what's going on in classrooms, I think we really, probably could, do that program, the program very much.
So if you go to page twenty-nine, you can see the role of the special education They also got the one percent increase from the state on revenue. Plus, it kind of matters what their balance is, or what their caseload is of students, because a lot of that, and for the severe kids, it's funded based on that. So increases slightly more than one percent for them because of their caseload of kids on IEPs. You can see the expenditures down below. That's a two point six percent increase overall. So there's actually some real reduction going on there because the salaries are going up about two point six or two point seven percent. So if you look into, if you continue on, you can, we can look through their, kind of a little bit of their detail of their cost centers. Early intervening services as a large cut. You're reducing one, English language arts adoption. It's kind of offsetting that, just special FTE, specialist FTE to accurate FTE based on time study by cost center. And it reduces one point five literacy teachers at high school did a change in the service delivery of ELL. So they've saved some money on that program because the way the services are being delivered, it doesn't qualify as early intervening service anymore. Not that the services are, they're just being delivered differently. And that's part of that general fund. So that's a significant reduction there. There isn't, there's one or two expansions, and I guess you can see them down below, in the elementary school program, line fifty-three. It's just a small increase. Some of that increase is for growth in the program, just based on the caseload. So it isn't, we don't consider that an expansion. But we're going to purchase this early reading test, test of early reading achievement, TARA. And that isn't more of a dollar amount. That isn't a ton of money, if I remember. But it is an expansion because they're not buying it now. And then the elementary behavior programs, increasing number of elementary students with emotional and behavior deficits with the support skills they need to be safe in a school environment, provides for the purchase of the TARA for that program as well. So that, those are the two increase, actually, expansions in special ed. The rest of it is some of those cost center reductions, I think had to do with the size of the, them too. Last year, they had a very expensive curriculum adoption. This year, the cost, cost went down. So overall, two point seven percent increase. Any questions on, I kind of want to go in a hurry, but we'll run out of time. So special ed, there is a ton of changes to that program. If you get to page thirty-four, it's kind of, there's a lot of detail in the capital fund request, but page thirty-four is what our plan looks like going forward. And I'll just, you know, you study that plan. But it's kind of divided up into areas there, like line thirteen is your total revenue available. Next year, we're estimating thirty-two point seven million available in revenue. And then if you go down, that's on line thirteen. If you go down to line twenty-one, that's the first big chunk of, of expenses. That's all our debt service for next year. And it's about fourteen million dollars of that thirty-two that we have to spend is, is for capital certificates we've passed in the, in the, we've issued in the past. And then we get into the, kind of the more day-to-day expenditures. And you can see, we're committing a good, and that's a, you know, and this will be part of this capital facilities planning that we're going through as well. Our, Jeff has that big thick, he's got a couple of big thick documents. But one of those is his fifteen-year maintenance plan. This funds that. And that's on line twenty-five. And so this year, we're at six point three million dollars. And we just look at what he's got showing up in his schedule, and we budget those out into, into the future. So if you work your way, if you work your way through this, other items of interest are the technology expenditure. I've got, I've got one, I've got to get rid of one of those line items because I moved it down. But three point, basically four million dollars is funding that tech plan that Mike presented to you a meeting or two ago. So that's kind of, those are the three biggest expenditures in the fund. The debt service, the big renovation and maintenance, and the tech plan. And then we have some replacement banks and what below. We are not putting any money into the CIP projects. Oh, just a little bit, forty-one thousand next year. But you can see then, as that transfer goes off, it becomes, and that's line thirty-seven, becomes six point six million, six million the next year, basically, six million, then out in FY twenty-three, maybe even up to nine million dollars. So that's what's going on there. You can see our CIP revenue will be balanced at the, and that's lines fifty-one. CIP will basically be forty-one thousand to the good at the end of this year. And our unobligated capital fund balance, we're showing a nine million dollars. That's basically a hold, you know, we're holding it. That's line seventy-six. And then you can see, as we go forward, we will have, and if I look up on line seventy-three, about six million dollars each year in FY twenty through twenty-three to spend on capital improvement projects. And then maybe grow the fund a little bit out in twenty-three. We do have some replacement banks. We summarize them at the bottom of this page. If you want to look at the individual replacement banks, flip over to the next page. The print was getting too small. If we tried to put it all on one page. So we've got the CIP in there, and we talked about that. But we have the land bank, CT equipment bank, the wireless replacement bank, and technology. Technology, we're more, now we've kind of got into the one-to-one initiative. So we don't need to, we don't need to, we used to have to put money in there because we bought a bunch of computers in one year. And now we've kind of got it. So we've got them on a cycle. So that is essentially, that technology will probably go away unless it's replaced with, with something else. We have the wireless replacement bank, which is intended to fund every five years or so, five or six years ago, that, all the infrastructure so that the wire, you know, the wireless computers work. So that's what we've got going on there. Questions on the capital fund?
I have a really random question on line twenty-four for playground equipment. Do we have like a standard of how often, is there like a threshold that says when elementary school. standard of how often, is there like a threshold that says when elementary school reaches X number of students, that the amount of submit should be expanded to allow those? Or what's the 45,000 for?
It used to be 15 when I first got here. And it's, you just have a replacement cycle going through.
The way it was saying was to replace all the, most people don't want to get rid of all the equipment.
Sure, add to it versus?
They really do, to get rid of all the stuff.
And they're essentially on a 20-plus year cycle, because it's one elementary a year, a year, is what we budget for.
I just feel like there's a lot of elementary schools right now who are doing like BTO hundred, or drawing.
Oh, yeah.
When I saw that, it made me wonder, like, where does that, where does that go? Who gets that? They're drawing every, every year? No? Thank you.
Yeah.
It's kind of something that changes every year, because you do the inspection, one type of, before another one, so you guys got what to look to do. And then we coordinate what we do, we coordinate them together.
Sure. We'll, we'll supply X amount if you want to add to that. Thank you.
So there's details of all the requests, if you want to see that, starting on page 37. More detail than probably want to see, but it shows what's requested, what was funded there. And then page 44 is a roll-up of the tax-supported funds, it's just all the tax-supported funds on one page, you can see the total expenditure budget is 251 million. For the general fund, Special Ed Fund, Capital Fund, we're down to three tax-supported funds right now anyway. And then in the back of the book, on page, starting on page 45, are your self-supported funds. They include the ComEd, which has several different sub-funds in it, Carpentry House, which, a few, we said a couple of years ago, a few years ago, it mostly just, used to, Carpentry House, we'd probably get rid of it, it used to fund the materials to build the house, but now we have two different entities providing those materials, and what this does is replace equipment, is what that fund does. You got the Reprographic Center, which is the copy center, builds back, produces copies and builds back to the different buildings, Food Service Fund, that, you're supposed to meet, there's a federal number you're supposed to be at, so we're basically raising that 10 cents a year, every year, what we charge in that because of the federal, there's a, you know, there's a dollar amount that you're supposed to, to be at, and we got up to it, and now it's basically 10 cents a year to stay at that level. They want you to, you'd be charging, to be keeping up with what they're kicking in on, on their side, is essentially what that is. Insurance Trust Fund, that's, I talked about that a little bit earlier in the other funds, but the average increase next year would be 4.7%, depending on which group you're in, or whether or not you meet the, you get the wellness initiative. We, that fund has gone up 29.5% over the last eight years, that's an average increase of 3.3, so we've beat that five, is what we've done in there. And then the D, you know, kind of, not the details so much, but the, the roll-ups by the different funds, follow behind that page. And then there's a roll-up of all these funds on page 40, page 50, sorry. And you can see a roll-up of the Food Service Fund on page 51, and the Insurance Trust Fund on page 50. Any questions about those? Those are self-supported, they either bill individuals, like the Food Service Fund, or they bill back to other funds, like the Insurance Trust Fund, and that, that's combo. Our employees also kick into that as well. Questions on any of those? We're at 56 minutes, not bad. Gives you four minutes for...
Discussion, thanks.
Can you slow down a little bit? I'm glad you did.
Do they have any questions for Todd? Well, I know a lot of work goes into it, and appreciate all the staff time and people in the community that sit on the budget committees and, and that roll up to the budget committee itself, so it's a lot of time that goes into it, so I appreciate all that, and your team especially, Todd.
Oh, those guys up there as well, man. Thank you. There's like 150 different people that sit on this.
Yeah, so.
A lot of representation.
No other questions?
Just a reminder for, that the 11th, right, is when we'll actually...
Yeah, we'll...
...eliminarily, so if people have comments or questions.
That's right. So the, the regularly scheduled board meeting was moved from Monday to Wednesday at 5:30, and we'll have a budget hearing at that time. Thank you. Move on to committee reports, try to go through those quickly. Kent, you want to start?
Budget Committee, we just heard the report, and I want to echo Kate's appreciation for what everybody in the district does to keep us fiscally responsible, and it is a huge job with looking at nearly 25,000 kids and 3,500 employees, it's some of the most important work that's done in Sioux Falls, and I know how seriously everyone takes it, so thank you for that. STI, the State Tech Ed Board met last week, at STI approved the tuition increases and student fee increases for Southeast, and there's just so much going on at Southeast Tech right now, more involvement with the business community, with internships, grants, and the kinds of funds that we got from the governor to do some things in combination with the Career Tech Ed Academy in Southeast Tech, so nobody is out looking for projects, but it seems like things just keep going, so good stuff there.
All right. Calendar, we have nothing new, we just will be looking at that as a board, the recommendations we have here. PAF, we met, not a whole lot of new things, where there were a few requests from parents or principals to review a few high traffic areas, so the city is currently doing some traffic house on those, and we'll bring that back to us. The workforce development with the Chamber, just continued formulation of kind of the scope and purpose of that group. Last time we did a really interesting exercise where we broke into two groups, and they gave us a population of students, and said if you were a business owner, or you were a community member, what activities or what interventions would you propose to help this population of students, to try to really get people from all the different perspectives? And it was students who weren't going to graduate from high school, and it was students who were going to graduate but not continue on to higher ed, what would you want them to know about their job prospects and their education and things like that? So it was a really good exercise, and I think people appreciated it, and were, and asked if we could maybe do that again, just to brainstorm with other populations of students that we might be able to target from the workforce development group, so it was very interesting. Policy, we met yesterday, so we'll have some policies review on the 11th as well.
Boston PTA, sports sporting we meet next month, ASVSD, we're all heading to the convention, and they'll be Sunday or Friday.
So that, with the budget, to be able to get a proper answer, work like this and understand our budget, the way it's laid out for us, I can't tell you the [inaudible].
Insurance, there was really nothing waiting in the void of stop-loss policy. Calendar, she touched on April 23rd. The snow day. Affordable Housing.
When is that, sorry, when's the calendar meeting?
I believe it's April 23rd.
Sorry, Jamie, we're voting.
Yeah, on the 23rd, April 23rd, bring the calendar.
I'm gonna get it to the next week and tell us the [inaudible].
We want to wait until it's all done.
Exactly, let's hope.
I've had a couple of requests from home that the snow day not be made up.
Me too.
I told my kids not to count on it, so.
Education Foundation, we postponed our meeting from yesterday till next week since there was no school to, teachers who had the day off and so forth, so I'll update you next time on that. And Affordable Housing, we did not meet, but we sent out a draft 2017 of what they did for the year, and just a little update, for example, they did $1.8 million on 16 units in the city of Sioux Falls, nine have been completed, seven are still in process, hopefully be completed this year, eight were single-family, eight were apartment units. The whole report can be on the, found on the City of Sioux Falls website.
Budget, Kent touched on, policy, Carly touched on, Head Start, we met on the 19th. The class review just completed, and class stands for?
Head Start, class stands for?
It's the assessment of education.
So we just went through the assessment for that, and the grant is completed, so we're still getting good parent participation at our meetings. We have a waiting list of about 189 students currently. And then the Chamber Board met last week, and Dr. Maher came and gave his facilities presentation. And so we were able to present to the whole chamber. Dr. Maher came and presented the facilities, similar to...
Similar to what we've all heard during the community engagement meetings that we held last week, we went to the, the Chamber Board meeting and kind of gave a consolidated presentation on our, the phases that we've, we're going through, what we've been through, all the information that we've been providing the community, so I thought that was really well-received, some good questions, and so that was, that was good. All I have. Okay, anything else for the good of, the good of the order?
And reminder that next Tuesday there is an election.
Yes. Next Tuesday there is a school board election, along with the city and mayoral, there might be another election, I think, going on right then. Yeah. So a reminder to those listening that we are, please go out and vote. All right, anything else? Move to adjourn? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.